Welcome to the Brown County League of Women Voters Virtual Candidate Forum. This forum is candidates for Brown County School Board at large. I am Sherri Frank, President of the Brown County League. The league is a nonpartisan organization. We don't support or oppose political parties or candidates. We provide candidate forums and voter guides to make information available to help voters in making decisions. I'd like to introduce our moderator, Michael Potts. Michael teaches social studies at Brown County Junior High School and has led We the People to six state championships, national championship, and more. Thank you, Michael, for moderating this forum.
Thank you. Tonight's candidates for Brown County School Board are Marlene Barnett, Stephanie Porter Kreitzer, Linda Hobbs, Lance Miller, and Amy Huffman Oliver. Each candidate will be asked to give a two-minute opening statement followed by a series of questions. We will conclude our round of questioning with each candidate giving a two-minute closing statement. The order of the questions to candidates will rotate in alphabetical order, so as one candidate is not answering all questions first. Candidates will have one minute to answer all questions. When there is 30 seconds remaining in a candidate's response, our timekeeper will hold up a yellow card. A red card will be presented when time has expired. We will begin with opening statements. Ms. Barnett, you have two minutes for your opening statement.
Can everyone hear me?
Sure can.
Okay. Welcome, everyone, to the elections of Brown County School Board. I want to thank everybody who has had a hand in this, making it a wonderful experience for all of us. And please be aware that I want to thank Dr. Hammick and all of the people on the board and everyone out there who has worked together with the community, the school in all, and has helped in helping work with some of our more difficult problems and coming up with solutions, especially during this pandemic. Please, again, I want to thank Dr. Hammick, and I'm nervous, of course, but then probably everyone else is too, so I will try to say as much as I can. Dr. Hammick has worked really hard on coming up with solutions and answers with the help of some of the other problems that we have had with the last four years. She has worked hard, she's worked overtime, and I want to say this, that I think the school has been, has chosen a wonderful superintendent. And thankfully, when we were in the budget discussions, we were able to trim our budget so that we would not now be under a state control system. Everyone, thank you for all your help, and I want to say those people that have worked with Dr. Hammick and the rest of us, I would like to salute at this point, Dr. Hammick, for doing a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Hobbs, two minutes to you. Ms. Hobbs, you are still muted.
I'm going to get used to the technology. I too would like to welcome everyone for participating. This is my second or third time I've done this sort of thing, and I really appreciate the format that the league provides for us. I too think that we are under good leadership. I believe that we are doing a good job with our kids in many, many areas. I just want to participate in the setting policy and the governance, which is the area I probably have experience in, to continue forward and progressive and reaching out to the community and all the families and children. And that's good enough for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kreitzer, two minutes for your opening statement.
Yes, I'm Stephanie Porter Kreitzer, and I'd like to start out by thanking the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. I have spent eight years on the school board and have found it very fulfilling as far as being in touch with the issues at hand. I've learned so much from the time I stepped on the board till now by going to conferences and just a lot of hands-on experiences. I worked in the classroom for 17 years as a paraprofessional and loved every minute. It was such a wonderful, fulfilling experience, and I hope to be able to tell you more about that as we go along. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, opening statement to you.
Hi, I'm Lance Miller. I would also like to thank the league for hosting this, and it's really nice to see all your faces finally, and I know what Sherri Frank looks like now after all her emails. You may remember me as the art teacher at Brown County High School for 19 years. I had got my bachelor's of fine arts education from IU and my master's from Indiana Westland. I also kind of see this whole thing from a parent's perspective, and then I had two stepsons graduate the high school, and I currently have an 11-year-old right now at the intermediate school. Honestly, I also feel that Dr. Hammick has done a pretty amazing job, considering the hand she's been dealt with shrinking enrollment. You know, I went through some tough times under other administrations when I was there, and I'm not out for some revenge tour or something like that. Really, my wife and I have talked about getting involved, more involved in the community, and I felt like this is one aspect that I have experience in, and I would be qualified to serve. So I would look forward to learning a lot, to be quite honest. You know, school board meetings weren't always high on my priority list when I was a teacher. I'd spent a lot of time advocating for kids and working with kids, and that was kind of my focus. So I'm really interested to see the inner workings of this whole thing and contribute in any way I possibly can. Thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Oliver?
Good evening. My name's Amy Huffman Oliver, and I am so excited to be here tonight. I want to thank Sherri Frank for all of the hard work that goes into this and Mr. Potts for being our moderator tonight and Pam Rader for being our timekeeper. So great to have everybody here. I'm running for school board because I feel like I have three different hats on that can be really valuable to Brown County schools. The first hat is as a teacher. I've been a teacher for the past five years in Brown County Schools, seven years as a professional teacher, and I've taught social studies the past five years at Brown County Junior High School, and I've traveled in the summers, and I know hundreds of teachers around the country now because the profession of teaching is just something I'm really passionate about. And I left Brown County Junior High in May, and I'm still teaching. I'm teaching, as you can see behind me, Internet English as a foreign language. So I feel like I'm a lifelong learner and a lifelong teacher. As an attorney, I've been an attorney since I was 25. I spent the first 20 years of my career as an attorney in criminal law, family law, administrative law, and I can bring all of those critical thinking skills and my legal skills and my professionalism to the board, and I think that that's going to be a really valuable attribute. I also think that part of our job as school board members is to help Dr. Hammick go to the legislature and talk about the things that we need as small rural schools, and I think that that's something that I can really be helpful with. And the final hat that I wear is as a parent. I have two sons. One graduated in 2018 from Brown County High School, and the other is a senior right now. And so I feel like I can bring all those experiences together and be a really good school board member. So thanks for your time tonight, and I can't wait to have this great discussion about what's best for our schools.
Thank you, Mrs. Oliver. We'll now proceed to our round of questioning. We're going to begin the first question with Ms. Hobbs. And remember that each question is a one-minute response. First question is, what are the roles and responsibilities of a school board member?
Role responsibilities are clearly to set policy and governance of the schools, maintain financial stability, assess and evaluate the superintendent, and be a liaison to the community is the other thing that I think is really important. Just support all the children to the best of their ability with education.
Thank you. Mrs. Kreitzer, same question to you. Roles and responsibilities of a board member.
Yeah. Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. The number-one job of the school board is to hire and evaluate the superintendent of schools. The second is to set policy, making sure that we're staying on budget. The funds are going where they need to go, and those are actually what our task is, is to do those two things. Thank you.
Thank you. Next goes to Mr. Miller. Roles and responsibilities of a board member.
I think in addition to setting the budget, and really, to me, one of the things that I saw when I was a teacher is I really feel the board members' main responsibility would be to listen. There's a lot to learn from people like Dr. Hammick, the community. There's a lot of differing opinions. Obviously, you can't go with every opinion. Also, to advocate for teachers. And, you know, as a teacher, I saw a lot of things happen with students. They would bring things up to me. So really, to advocate for them and listen to them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Mrs. Oliver, roles and responsibilities of a school board member.
I think Stephanie and Linda really brought up those, the big issues, the financial issues, policy, governance, stability, and support, and all of those are really important. But I think it's also important for a school board member and for the school board in general to think innovatively and progressively. Like, I want to talk about the healthcare, health and wellness center that we started because that is an example of, like, we need to bring down healthcare insurance for our teachers. And, well, we just can't keep bringing the cost down or the cost keeps going up, but instead, they came up with an innovative solution of creating a healthcare center that solves, helps the community, it helps the teachers, it helps the families, and it provides a new healthcare resource here in Brown County. So we can't just look at problems in the same old way. So I think a school board member really needs to be looking at trends around the country and how can we do things differently? Because we are going to have less money in the future, and we've got to figure out how we can spend every dollar wisely.
Thank you. Mrs. Barnett, same question to you.
I think one of the most important things is making sure of our safety for our children and that we are be very attentive to their needs and the way they learn, and especially with those that are learning remote at this point. Is this the best solution or the best program that we have for remote learning? I understand that there are many areas still without Internet. Hoping in the near future that something can be done either with a help from the legislature or help from maybe grants or whatever. But again, I think we need to put our children first, listen to what their parents say, listen to the community, and all of us work together as a team so we can best meet the needs of those children that may be hungry, going to school hungry. And I think that's one of the important things, that I would hate to be a child going to school learning on an empty stomach.
Time has expired. Thank you. Ms. Kreitzer, we're going to be on the second question with you. Please describe your vision and goals for Brown County Schools. Ms. Kreitzer, you're still muted.
Now, can you hear me?
Yes, sure can.
I, when I think about a vision for Brown County Schools, I see a place where the children, the students, and the teachers, administrator, see many, many possibilities and to enter careers and cultivate their interests. So many of, and I'm an old lady, but students or people that I went to school with, and some of their jobs, I'm sure they never imagined that they could have, that there was even a job that existed where they could flourish like that. And so I'd like to open the children's eyes to the possibilities and that possibilities and goals can be reached if they have hard work.
Thank you, Ms. Kreitzer. Mr. Miller?
Could you repeat the?
Sure can. Please describe your vision and goals for Brown County Schools.
You know, being a teacher, and an art teacher especially, I was so happy to see them finally take the STEM letters and update it to STEAM. That was one of the things that Dennis Goldberg talked to me about when they remodeled the art room a couple of years before I left. I think that is a great start. I would also like to see, in some form or another, things like building trades. You know, Chris Todd leaving left a huge hole in that school. And web design, some of the other parts of STEAM, which is science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics, come into the school. That's really the future, and I think they've got the ball rolling in a great way on that, and I would like to see it continue.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Mrs. Oliver, your vision and goals for this community or for the Brown County Schools?
I have three main goals that I want to talk about. The first one is we have to get Internet accessibility to every single family in Brown County, and we have shown that we, as the schools, are the ones to do that. We've brought the lines to Brown County, we've taken them out, and now we've got to get that Internet accessibility to every family. Otherwise, our kids are being left behind, not just in remote teaching, but in the world. And so we have to really make that a priority. My number-two priority is we've got to pay teachers a living wage. We have to pay them for the time that they spend. If they're doing extra duties, they need to be paid for that. And I think, I don't know where that money comes from. We're always searching for grants and finding ways to do it, but paying teachers is really important. And my third goal is that part of our motto that says world-class opportunities. We have to be providing cultural opportunities, computer literacy opportunities, training opportunities. All of those have to happen. We are not just a small rural school. We have to be a world-class school.
Thank you. Ms. Barnett, your vision and goals for Brown County Schools?
One of the things I think is very important and maybe even necessary is for more of the parents and more of the students have a discussion or meeting on the things that are offered by C4. C4 can also is a cooperative. Several schools around are part of it, and there are all kinds of areas that they can get their training on, plus they will get also their high school credits out of the way. And also, if they would, after they have meet their two years' training, most of them can go out and get a job, and then if they want additional training, those can be offered by IB Tech so that they can maybe even advance themselves even more and continue on until they are satisfied with their situation. Again, I urge every parent and every child to please take advantage of seeing what C9 offers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Hobbs, what is your vision and goals for the schools?
Okay. I addressed this in our questionnaire, but it still really kind of pulls it together. I think that our schools, we need to be flexible and purposeful with our education and programs, delivery, our course availability, and our offerings. And we need to continue the diligent efforts in planning, securing resources, addressing needs of students in rural households, which also addresses the Internet. Must maintain a vigilant approach to seeking and applying for any and all suitable grants appropriate for and available for our schools, such as the Eagle Manufacturing, the Governor's Work Ethic Certificate are just two examples that address those diverse student needs. And I think these challenges are just the beginning of the iceberg where we can actually be creative and be forward-thinking, as Amy mentioned. And I've always been up for a challenge, and I think that's what we need to do.
Thank you very much. Our third question, we're going to begin with Mr. Miller. This question comes from a Brown County Junior High School student. What practices, policies, and barriers, if any, should be addressed by the school board to provide for safety, equity, and inclusion for minority students, including LGBTQ, students of color, special needs students, and students with disabilities?
Well, that's an excellent question. There's a lot of moving parts to that one. I definitely feel like the school, when you come to the school, you need to feel like it's a safe space. If that means more security, that's a possibility. We've been pretty lucky. My experience is mainly that at the high school, and that we haven't had many problems like that. As far as inclusion of minorities and LGBTQ, you know, really a zero tolerance policy on any type of bullying, discrimination. I think there's a big debate among teachers, or there used to be, as far as what constitutes a hate symbol or hate speech from one student to another. But really, just being aware and hitting it head-on when there is an issue. There's a lot of moving parts to that that are hard to answer in a one-minute, but mainly the awareness and the zero tolerance on any type of hate speech or anything like that.
Thank you. Mrs. Oliver, same question to you.
Will you repeat the question? There was a lot in that.
I sure will. What practices, policies, or barriers, if any, should be addressed by the school board to provide for safety, equity, and inclusion for minority students, including LGBTQ, students of color, special needs students, and students with disabilities?
All right. So any student who was ever in my classroom knows that this is a particular issue for me. I taught Eastern Hemisphere, and I taught about discrimination, and I taught about safe spaces in my classroom every single day. It is absolutely imperative that every student in our school system feels safe. And so we have to do more to do that because every student in our classroom does not feel safe. And a lot of parents will tell me, oh, we don't have that problem here. We do have that problem here. And my students would tell me about the things that would be said to them or about them, and we have to deal with those issues, but we have to deal with them systemically. So the school system needs to be providing more training. We need to be doing sensitivity training. We need to be training our teachers. We all think we know how to handle these problems, but we really don't. And we need to look at the observations and the training and the procedures that are available from other school systems that are a lot more advanced than ours. And then we have to actually take the time and the effort and put them in place.
Thank you. Mrs. Barnett, same question to you. What practices, policies, or barriers, if any, should be addressed by the board to provide for safety and inclusion for minority students? Ms. Barnett, you are muted.
Now, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. I think that one of the best ways to probably help in some of these problems that most of them have mentioned, and a lot of them are still on track, but we need to, as a group, maybe in a classroom, if there's some kind of racist talk or something, we need to get in a, maybe a group, and they need to discuss these with the teacher, of course, monitoring everything that's taking place and just discuss it among themselves and ask themselves, what can I do to help you not to feel unsafe in this classroom because Johnny or Peter or Paul, whoever, is calling me bad names? Again, I think it needs to be group effort. Everybody needs to be aware of it, and I think they need to get together, maybe in some kind of a team forum or something, and see what they can work out and see how well those students can handle the situation and what would they do?
Mrs. Hobbs, same question to you. One minute.
Remembered to mute. Well, this is, it's critical these days. I think that we need to seriously try to understand where everyone's coming from. That's kind of how I function. In a perfect world, every child would come to understand that they would be safe, and they would be understood, and they would be respected for their beliefs, regardless of what they are, what color their skin is, or any other choice they make in life. And we should make sure that our adults understand that, and we need to be more specific and intentional about how we address that as we go.
Thank you. Mrs. Kreitzer?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can.
All right. I agree with Lance. I like the way he stated that the students deserve to have a safe space, and schools should be a safe space for our kids. Again, we have a zero tolerance for bullying, but we need to be aware of solutions and be open to solutions that come up individually. We can't just say, as a group, we're going to do this, or as a group, this is how we're going to handle students. But I think it's also important to teach the students how to handle the chain of command and to know where to go. You have to go up the ladder, and if you're not addressed at one level, please move to the next. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Oliver, you will begin our next question. What do you see as some of the strengths of Brown County Schools?
It's our people. It's always our people, and it's absolutely our teachers. I have so enjoyed being a teacher for the past five years at the junior high school, and I have lots of friends throughout the campuses here on our staff. The teachers here will go to any lengths that are necessary to meet the needs of a student, and I don't know that that's true everywhere. So I think we're just really, really blessed to have that. And we've also talked about this. Our greatest strength is Dr. Hammick. She is just an amazing superintendent, so we're really, really lucky to have her at our helm. And the last piece that we have that I think is our strength is that we have this small community. We talk about small rural schools, and that means that the kids in my room aren't just a kid. I know their names, I know their families, I know their siblings, I often know their parents, and that's just really a great strength that we have.
Thank you. Ms. Barnett, what do you see as some of the strengths of Brown County Schools? Ms. Barnett, you are still muted.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Hear me now?
I can.
Okay. I again believe that Dr. Hammick is the one, the strength, and so are the teachers, and they, because they've been together for a long time. They have worked out many problems in this area, and I believe that the teachers being their longevity that helps the school system to better help those that are feeling, let's see, helping them and their families, and even the community has taken an interest in a lot of the things that do happen in the schools. schools and they have willingly and have tried to also put their input so that they could all come to something that will work out for the best for all. Thank you.
Mrs. Hobbs, some strengths of Brown County schools that you see? Mrs. Hobbs, you are also muted.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Our leadership and our staff are, teachers are amazing and the support staff that the paraprofessionals clear down to the cooks, bus drivers, they all care about our kids. And the fact that it's a small community where a lot of people know, a lot of people and their families makes it seem comfortable. And the community involvement with the schools, the school is a key piece of the community and interacts with many other organizations within the community. We're work together well.
Thank you. Ms. Kreitzer, same question to you. Ms. Kreitzer, you are also muted.
I would say that our strengths lie with Dr. Hammack and our staff, teachers and everybody, bus drivers, the whole staff, anybody that works with a kid. And I, I'd like to say that because we have been very careful in budgeting and not replacing people when they leave, but sort of moving the tasks, spread them out, we've been able to give the teachers a raise. And because of
Thirty second.
Health Center, we've been able to not raise our health, our premiums in the past two years. And that's unbelievable. And also the grants that we've gotten, Eagle Manufacturing, I mean, it just keeps going on and on. So those are our strengths.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. One minute to you.
Thanks. I, I would echo the sentiments of most of the people that spoke here and say that the teachers and staff have been outstanding. My daughter just came over from ABC Montessori School to Brown County Intermediate this year and we were really pleasantly surprised by how great the staff is. She's had nothing but great things to say about it. Also, class size is outstanding. And I mean, you know, Brown, the, the small Brown County community is also just unbelievably beautiful. You know, we run a restaurant in town and every sporting event that they have here, everyone loves to come here. You know, if we could just get some people to move here and stay and grow, grow a little bit, but as far as location and setting, we're knocking it out of the park. It's, it's, it's an amazing place to live and raise a family.
Thank you. Ms. Barnett, next question to you. What do you see as priorities to address Brown County's unmet needs for students, for parents and for the community?
Would you, would you repeat that again, please?
I sure will. What do you see as priorities to address in Brown County schools' unmet needs for students, parents and for the community?
Well, one of the unmet needs is, would be that yet we need to have young families move into the area. We need to have affordable housing for those people. And we need to be sure that we are allowing, letting everyone know that we are beautiful place. We have our great school system. Yes, we have our problems, but so do the rest of them. And getting the infrastructure such as septic systems and this type of thing that would help for people to move with children, enrolling into school and just advertise that fact throughout part of Southern Indiana. And I think that might make a difference on how things can be worked out and for a better setting, a better community and everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hobbs, do you see any unmet needs for students, parents and the community that you would address? Nope.
Frozen.
There you go.
Oh, okay. I'm just, it's just not recording. Okay. Unmet needs would be the needs that most of us have. We know we need to get the tax base a little wider. Fifty percent of the community county is owned by, is off the tax rolls. Therefore, we have to be critical and forward-thinking about the types of development that comes to the county. I think the school corporation needs to be a critical part of the other county entities, whether it be planning and zoning, so that we all work together to develop our whole county as well as our school system. I think that would probably help all of us.
Thank you. Ms. Kreitzer, unmet needs that you might see for students, parents and the community and plans that, or, or how you would address them?
Sure. Of course, affordable housing is crucial. We need to be able to attract young families with children. And the internet, which we've worked on, we, the school corporation recently received a grant to basically give 113, I think, families in the county with children in the schools some assistance with that. Another thing I would say is, as a school corporation, we, one of the things we're going to be looking for in the next year or so is busing, our buses and our routes and see if we can condense or make those a little more streamlined and efficient. And those are something we need to work on. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Sure. What do you see as priorities to address in our schools' unmet needs for students, parents and the community?
I, I definitely think COVID has shown a huge light on the internet issue. Several people have mentioned that. That's going to be big moving forward because we really don't know what's going to happen. And those people need to be able to work from home. Also, the affordable housing has been mentioned. Big Woods is putting the brewery kind of back behind my place now, so there are a few more opportunities coming in for families. And really, I mentioned this before as well, I think a lot of the pop student population here could benefit greatly from things like the building trades that were lost, web design, some of those things, those skilled trades would be huge moving forward if we could be creative and figure out a way, maybe partner with the CRC a little bit more to bring those back to the community. I know the school felt a huge loss when the trades went away on site. And I know the, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Oliver?
So affordable housing, internet, bringing more folks, those are absolutely top priorities. But I have a couple of others. And the number one for me is to change the state formula for funding small rural schools. We have to, as a school board, as, as, as citizens, we have to change the formula because we're receiving fewer dollars per student than they do in rich suburban districts. And so our kids are worth the same amount of money as those kids. And we have to use our influence as school board members to lobby for those changes. And that's something that's just absolutely imperative. We've cut as much as we can cut, now we've got to increase our income in another way. Two other issues that I think are vital for families is food. Amazing things that we've done over the past six months on food delivery, free lunches. And the last one is childcare in Brown County. Our parents, you know, we have after-school programs, but we don't have sufficient preschool and toddler daycare in our county and we haven't. Has to be changed.
Thank you. Ms. Hobbs, we'll begin the next question with you. What issues do you see in our county that affect student performance and achievement? And what action, if any, should the board take to facilitate student success?
Okay, repeat that, please.
What issues do you see in the county that affect student performance and achievement? And what action, if any, should the school board take to facilitate student success?
I think it's a primary, the school board have our leadership be involved in a, in a, in a big wish, every child should have their individual educational plan to, to address any and all needs. That's not very realistic, I understand. However, we are doing more to meet the students where they are and to move them forward regardless of their educational level than we've ever done. And I think we just need to continue to do more of that and let our leadership figure out the how we do that, the people that know, the administrator, the faculty, the work with, and also do any lobbying that we can do to help get programs to do that as well because that's a critical thing that Amy mentioned, which is really important.
Thank you, Mrs. Hobbs. Ms. Kreitzer, issues in the county that you see affecting student performance and achievement? And actions, if any, should the school board take to facilitate student success?
Right. So one of the things I think I've noticed, I've been here my whole life, and one of the things that's really hard is for extracurricular activities with children that live in the outlying areas as opposed to just in Nashville. A lot of things are centrally located. And one of the things I think we've done is at the elementary school, they've started running clubs and other activities that the kids can grow into. So I see that as, oh, sure. And then our educators are so wonderful about recognizing the students' strengths and interests. I'm sure Lance saw that a lot in the art classroom. Somebody would have a certain flair and I'm sure he noticed that and tried to cultivate it.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, any issues you see affecting student performance and achievement? And any role the board should take to help facilitate success?
Sure. I, I, Stephanie kind of stole my, my answer there. I was going to definitely say, Brown County has always faced a challenge. I know they have trouble with busing. It's so spread out. Sometimes it's difficult to get the kids there. And I would take it a step further. I think getting the parents into the school, you know, the, the parents that I always needed to talk to the most, whose kids were underperforming. I always had difficulty getting them to come into the classroom. You know, it was mentioned before, I believe by Linda, how the school is really a center of our community. And, you know, obviously COVID notwithstanding here, when this is all over, I think we could do more things to bring them into the school. They used to do a lot of that at my daughter's Montessori School, a lot of events to bring the community together. And I think that's something that would, that would be something that we, we could all agree on, that would be easy to move forward with.
Thank you, Mrs. Oliver.
We talked about this already, but we have food insecurity. We have transportation insecurity in a county where you have to have a car. If your car doesn't work and you can't get to work, you can't get to town, you can't get your kid to the bus stop, that is just a huge barrier to our families and affordable housing. So those are just three issues, but that often comes down to poverty. We have a lot of families in poverty and they struggle or they're right on the edge. And that is what is affecting, you asked the question, what affects student performance and achievement? The kids in my classes who struggled were kids who were struggling at home with poverty. And so whatever we can do, and, and again, sometimes this is outside of the school system, but I think it's not. I think we still are agents for change within our community. We need middle-class jobs here. We need to bring those students and families in, as Marlene said. And we need more of those middle-class jobs and the jobs we do have need to be paid better so that parents don't have to leave the county in order to work.
Thank you. Ms. Barnett, issues in the county that affect student performance and achievement and any action the school board should take to facilitate student success? Ms. Barnett, you are muted.
All right. Can you hear me now?
Sure can.
All right. Well, Mrs. Oliver has hit a lot of the points that I was going to make, but again, I am still, the children in insecure homes that really maybe others do not know, the abuse or the violence or the hunger or the lack of maybe proper clothing through winter and summer can also be a real determiner for kids not performing well in school, especially the hunger part. I have, I know some, a few examples of that. And if the kids are hungry, they're not going to learn very well. If the kids feel ashamed the way they are dressed, they're not going to function very well. They, that they are probably laughed at, sometimes they're probably made fun of. Somehow, some way, the community needs to help with this problem, especially hunger, so that when the kids do get to school, they feel like they are a member of that class and not an outsider. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kreitzer, next question will begin with you. Could you please describe the school board role in financial management, including monitoring the budget and setting priorities?
Sure. In a lot of instances, we don't have a lot of say-so in where the money is distributed when we get it from the different places we get it. They go into a couple of different funds. That was just changed recently. But our teachers' salaries, benefits goes into one account and then all of our other items go into another account. We just need to make sure that we're balancing and not overextending ourselves. Right now, we have a credit score. I mean, we're, we're doing really well. We've been able to get a bond at an unbelievably low amount. And so just continue to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, describe the school board role in financial management, including monitoring and budget and setting priorities?
Well, again, here, I feel like school board's main role would be to listen to concerns of the community, the, the teachers, the administrators. And, you know, it's been mentioned several times that Dr. Hammack's done an amazing job with our budget. Really, this is one area, even though my wife and I manage multiple businesses, I have lots of budget restrictions with those, I would have a lot to learn. I know that the wish list, any wish list I could come up with would be quickly shot down by the reality that is what the state is going to give us. So, and I also think you could advocate, I think some of the administration, the state would be open. And we've seen that teachers, administrators can change things as they've done around the country with regard to budget, if you stand up and fight for those things. So I think you need to be an advocate first and foremost and listen to other concerns from the administration and the community.
Thank you. Mrs. Oliver, one minute to you.
This is, of course, the primary role of the school board. It's a budgetary board that determines policy and determines budget. And it's the toughest job, particularly in a declining school district. We know that we lost approximately 100 students since last year. And that is thousands and thousands of dollars. So we have to make do with less. As I said, I want to be going to the State House and changing that, so maybe we can get more per student. But I think it's also important to think about our priorities. We do need to maintain our buildings. It's one of our greatest strengths. Buildings we have have some beautiful facilities in them, so that's important. But number two is we have to keep paying our teachers. Our teachers had nine years with no raises. And so it, and last year, they got a raise, but it doesn't make up for the lost time that they had. So we have to continue to, if you want good teachers, you're going to have to pay more and continue to pay more. We've got to find the money to do that. So I think that's one of the top priorities we have to look at.
Thank you. Mrs. Barnett?
Do you hear me now?
Yes, I do.
All right. Would you repeat the question, please?
Sure will. Describe the school board role in financial management, including monitoring the budget and setting priorities?
Okay. Okay, one thing that Dr. Hammack has done, as in a board meeting, when we were discussing finances and what is the top of the list that needs to be addressed first. She and the others and the board will work on, okay, what do we need the most? And how can we get money for this? It could take, maybe we have a building that has a furnace problem. And as long as it's working halfway well, or working well, we can go ahead and maybe put money aside for some of these projects that are most needed for the safety and the well being of the staff and the children. And work on saving the money, seeing where we can get a grant or something that might help with this. And just being sure we're getting the best people to do the job and not sort of overcharging there. We have to be careful because sometimes they do. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hobbs?
All right. I think we, as a board, must, that's our fiduciary responsibility, set that and setting policies. But you, it's incumbent upon every board member to understand the budget and the divisions of it. You don't have to be able to do it. That's why you have a superintendent and a business manager. You rely on those folks and you work in a planning mode with that annually. That's what I did the 12 years I served in the 90s. And you rely on those folks and you lobby state for equal funding for all schools, which we do not get. Even if we did the park property or got some kind of a edge. I know that's been done years past, but wasn't very successful. Because our state government land.
Thank you. I think we have time to squeeze in one last question before moving on to closing argument or closing statements. This question comes from Brown County Junior High School student there. And it goes to Mr. Miller first. Assuming a vaccine for COVID-19 becomes available, what is your opinion on requiring students and staff members to be vaccinated?
Well, that's a, that's a tough one. It depends on if it's available tomorrow or a year from now. I, I think some time needs to pass if people trust it. I definitely think you would have to be vaccinated. People are going to have to be vaccinated to return to normal life. I mean, that's, that's just a fact. I'm not sure who wouldn't want to be vaccinated if it was safe, effective, all the science was there. I think you would have to require teachers, students, administrators, anyone that came in contact with the students to be vaccinated unless there were some extenuating circumstances.
Thank you, Mrs. Oliver.
I have to agree that at a certain point, vaccinations are for everyone's health. If we're going to have people in communal places. We already have vaccinations for, I don't know, 20 or 30 different things that are required before you enter kindergarten. So eventually, this vaccine will be part of that list. How it happens in the meantime, no one can tell you right now. But I do think that that's important to recognize. I, I know that we, we don't talk about teachers having vaccination, but I do believe that at some point, they asked me to find my vaccination records. And if I had not been vaccinated against mumps as a teacher, I was going to be excluded. So I think that it is important for all of us to have those vaccinations. And although there are going to be people who are going to be uncomfortable with that, I'm with, I'm with Lance, it depends on the science that, what that vaccine is about and is it safe? But eventually, I do think that it will be required for all of us.
Thank you. Mrs. Barnett, what is your opinion on requiring students and staff members to be vaccinated if a vaccination became available?
I, well, did it again. That would be a hard decision, I think, to force people to do it or even highly recommend. Because unless everyone is vaccinated and that it is shown to be safe in a, in a time period, that there's always going to be some people that's going to have bad reactions. So if that's the case, what do they have to replace it? That's another thing. We need, there's going to be people that will have reactions to these vaccines. And I think some, I think I read somewhere where they're going to start maybe at two once they have one developed. And that, to me, seems like rather a young age. But again, if not everybody takes advantage of this, then the pandemic, pandemic and the COVID-19 virus will not go away and will still keep having spikes.
Thank you. Ms. Hobbs?
I concur with Amy and Lance pretty much. My feeling, at this point, the jury is still out. And I think there's got to be a tremendous amount of science and testing and before you, anyone would be comfortable with this. But I do think in a timeframe that's, I don't know what that is, six months, six years? I don't know. But yes, it very much will be possible. However, we still do have the personal preferences of some students because of religious reasons do not get vaccinated, period, and attend school. So this, this is way out of my league. But I do think that, yes, once it's proven, it'll be good for everyone. But I'm not going to be one of the first ones, I'll tell you that.
Thank you. Ms. Kreitzer?
Yeah, I, I'm a lot with, with Linda. I, and, and I agree with Lance. I really agree with everybody. I don't, I don't know enough yet. I'm not sure we know enough yet. The science is going to have to back it up. Requiring, I wouldn't want someone to tell me what I absolutely have to do with my children or grandchildren. I, I think we're just going to have to wait and see. Eventually, I suspect it will be on the list of vaccinations required for, you know, along with the standards we have now, so.
Thank you. We're now going to proceed on with our closing remarks. We are going to begin with Mrs. Oliver. Mrs. Oliver, you have two minutes for your closing statement.
Well, thank you, Mr. Potts and Pam and Sherri and Janet and Lori for putting this on tonight. I'm really, I, this is always one of my favorite nights of the year, I have to say, as a, as a citizen to get to watch it. So I'm, I'm kind of honored to, to get to participate. I think that the reason that I want to be on the school board and the reason that you should vote for me is because I have so many experiences that I can bring to this job. I don't know what the issues are going to be in the next four years. You know, who could have foreseen the issues that we have had for the last six months? But what you need to look at is who can handle those challenges? And I have the experience in a variety of ways that I will be able to assist Dr. Hammack in whatever those challenges are as a member of the school board. I have experience as a, as a litigator and as a lawyer. I, I, I have been practicing law now for over 20 years and I'm currently an administrative law judge. And I, I read the law and I understand the law. So I think that I can be really helpful to the board in terms of understanding some of the legislation that comes out and the ways that we need to be in compliance with that. But I also really have a teacher's heart. My mom is a 40-year teacher, 20 years here in Brown County. And I, I just love this place and I love our schools. So I really have so much respect for all of our teachers and I want the best for them. And I, I really want to be out there and I want to be their cheerleader. And I want to make sure that they get what they need and that they have, feel like they can come to the board members and talk about what those needs are. And then finally, I feel like I can also represent families. You know, we've had our challenges, we all do, with our kids and the struggles that they have. And, you know, they have complaints about the school or a teacher or whatever's going on. But in the end, I'm also a parent and I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Barnett, two minutes for your closing statement. Mrs. Barnett, you're muted again.
Okay, hear me now.
I do.
I've also have spent 40 years of my life working with students and it's not always in schools, it's like in detention centers, private kindergartens. And also, I worked for 20-plus years at Central Nine, teaching adult ed. And some of them have, I have really had a lot of problems. And fortunately, because of some of the vocational classes that I have taken concerning teaching, I have been able to find many different ways of teaching subjects. Whereas in my day, one way was taught and there was no other way. I spent many, many hours on the computer trying to find the different ways and explaining it how it would best fit the students. And I also am, a lot of times concerned with how can we get our kids and their families more of what they need when they're at the poverty level? And how can we keep our kids from going to school hungry? And also for advanced training, C4 has a lot of good programs that I believe that parents would best check into if they have the time and if their kids are interested. And these are mainly for those who really prefer of not going on to college. Now, everyone is college material, but they do need good training where they can build up on it and that they can also advance their training further. Again, I believe Dr. Hammack has done a wonderful job. I will be more than happy to work with her for another four years. And I thank everyone for putting on this forum. And I pray that everyone will be safe going home.
Thank you. Ms. Hobbs, two minutes to you.
Yes, I'd also want to thank the league and putting on this forum. This is always interesting. And I have been a 52-year member of this county and have, I served on the school board from 86 to 98. And we went through a lot of development. And I am anxious to serve again because I think there's just more things that we can really do. I started, I've worked with youth, you know, youth football, Nashville Elementary Library. And I think I have a comprehensive working knowledge and understanding of the history and the unique circumstances that face our school system and our county and our government. And I've worked at the Park Department and with the Y. And we all have to work together. And as I said earlier, that I love a challenge, especially when the potential result is making a significant difference in the student lives and of future generations. And my hope is to leave this place and this world a better place than when I came. And I think I can be of service in the governance and forward-thinking development for our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kreitzer, closing statement to you.
So I want to thank the League of Women Voters again and also you, Mr. Potts, for being our monitor, mediator this evening. Some things we haven't talked about, we've talked about a lot of great things. And I think we have some excellent candidates for this job tonight. When you're on a board, you do have appointments to make. And this is in general, be careful who you vote for. Because who they put on a board or appoint to a board can make a difference in what other things happens besides school. I, I've served on the Brown County Redevelopment Committee. And I've learned a lot. And I also know that that's a huge responsibility that I'm representing the school board when we do that. Another thing about school board that we all need to remember is it's not our job to micromanage. And it's so hard not to, if you hear a problem, to not sort of dive in and try to help with your own little solutions. There is a procedure and we need to adhere to that procedure. And above all else, let's all vote. Everybody go out and vote, please. If you don't vote for me. But I think you can't go wrong with school board because everybody's got a handle on what's going on and, and with our candidates. So just please vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And last but not least, Mr. Miller, closing statement, two minutes.
Thanks. You know, I decided to run for school board really because I'm passionate about kids. I worked with kids for 19 years. When I, I started out on my journey in college, I was not looking to get involved with the school in any way. I just wanted to take art classes. And I started working with children and I absolutely loved it. They've taught me easily more in my time there than I ever learned at any school. So, you know, I, I feel like experience matters to some extent. And I have experience as a teacher, a parent. I kind of know the players as a business person. But really, if I did get on the school board, I think I would be there to learn again and to ask questions, to listen and to solve some of these tough problems. Brown County faces a lot of challenges with shrinking population. You know, there's a lot of competition among schools now. It's going to take a lot of critical thinking, a lot of vision. I, I really, you know, love solving problems. That's part of being an artist, is how do I figure this out? How do I, is this going to work? Is this not going to work? Obviously, you make a lot of mistakes. But I really feel like I have a lot to offer from the perspective of a teacher and a community member. I would be excited to serve. Thank you.
Thank you so much. This concludes tonight's candidate forum. On behalf of the Brown County League of Women Voters, I would like to thank each of tonight's candidates for allowing us to get to better know them and their positions on important community issues. I'd also like to encourage all of our viewers, please vote on November 3rd. Thank you.